Did Ms. Jackson vote nay?
Are you going to entertain any public comments on that word?
At the end, you may make a comment. As is always, the time for comments is during the work sessions prior to the meetings.
It's four to one.
Who voted? I'm sorry.
She voted nay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that you voted nay. So, let me just revise that. Ordinance number 2720, it passes by a vote of four to one. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2721 for the first reading.
So move.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Ordinance number 2721, an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of Salisbury for the period July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period and establishing the appropriation for the water and sewer, parking authority, city marina, and stormwater funds. Be it ordained by the city of Salisbury that the amounts listed in Schedule A operating budget appropriations are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022 and ending June 30, 2023, to fund operations of the city of Salisbury. Be it further ordained by the city of Salisbury that the amounts listed in Schedule B capital project appropriations are hereby appropriated for capital projects. Be it further ordained by the city of Salisbury that the amounts listed in Schedule C anticipated grant expenditures are hereby appropriated for the grants listed and the mayor is authorized to enter into any necessary agreements or memoranda in order to receive and expend these funds. Be it further ordained that the tax levy be and the same be hereby set at .9832 cents per $100 of assessed valuation of all real property at $3.51 per $100 of assessed valuation for all personal property characterized as utilities and at $2.40 per $100 of assessed valuation for all other personal property subject to taxation by the city of Salisbury for general fund purposes, including debt service purposes, exclusive of revenues derived from water and sewer fund for debt service purposes attributed to water and sewer activities, and all taxes levied by this ordinance shall be liens from and after July 1, 2022 and shall be due and payable as specified in Title 14 of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code as amended. And looking at Schedule A, which is the operating budget appropriations for the general fund, the total amount is $49,405,796. The parking authority fund for the special assessment district known as the Parking Authority total $887,510. The water sewer fund is $19,554,650. The marina fund $91,576. The stormwater fund $930,232, for a grand total of $70,955,764. Schedule B, the capital project appropriations are set forth therein, moving on to, it's one of two pages, and then Schedule C is the city appropriations for grant fund expenditures.
If you would, there was one number.
Did I read it wrong?
I think you might have. Just for clarification, the total, the first total I have is $49,501,796.
That is correct.
Is that correct? Because I think it was, the numbers may have been switched.
Did I transpose?
Just for clarification. Okay. Questions or comments from the, and please remember that all these numbers, this is the first reading and we have other changes that could be made based on our input. Questions or comments?
So just to clarify, President Heath, basically, tonight voting on this is just basically giving the go-ahead that we acknowledge that a budget exists, that there's going to be changes.
That there's going to, well, no, it says this is the first reading, which automatically allows us to make changes if we so choose before the second reading.
At council level.
At the council level.
So now the budget is in our hands, any amendments and changes have to come from us.
And remember that the budget is under a timeline and we have to have it approved by June 14, I believe that's what the date is. Okay?
Yes, thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Just for everybody's benefit, questions or comments? I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2721 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2721 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2722 for the first reading.
So move.
Ms. Jackson, or is it Mrs. Gregory?
Ms. Jackson.
I'm having a little trouble here in the night, so. And Ms. Blake seconded.
This is ordinance number 2722, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury, increasing water and sewer rates by 6% and making said changes effective for all bills dated October 1, 2022, and thereafter, unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the water and sewer rates must be revised in accordance with the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget of the city of Salisbury and the appropriations thereby made and established for the purposes of the water and sewer departments. The water and sewer rate schedule set forth herein shall be adopted as follows. Section 1A, Water and Sewer Rate Schedules; Section I, Metered Water Changes and City Rates. Residential and Small Commercial, the minimum charge is $25.23/quarter. Commodity Charge, $3.76 per 1,000 gallons. For Commercial, the customer charge, $472.01 per quarter. Commodity Charge, $2.19 per 1,000 gallons. Large Commercial/Industrial, customer charge, $729.53 per quarter. $1.75, I'm sorry, the commodity charge is $1.75 per 1,000 gallons. Schedule II, the metered water charges outside city rates, residential and small commercial, the minimum charge is $50.45 per quarter. The commodity charge is $7.53 per 1,000 gallons. Commercial, the customer charge is $944.01 per quarter. The commodity charge is $4.39 per 1,000 gallons. The large commercial industrial, the customer charge, excuse me, is $1,458.94 per quarter. The commodity charge is $3.53 per 1,000 gallons. Schedule III, the metered water rates or charges for Warwick Community College and the Urban Service District Rates, the residential and small commercial, the minimum charge is $37.83 per quarter. The commodity charge is $5.65 per 1,000 gallons. Commercial, the customer charge is $708.02 per quarter. The commodity charge is $3.29 per 1,000 gallons. Large Commercial/Industrial, the customer charge is $1,094.20 per quarter. The commodity charge is $2.94 per 1,000 gallons. Schedule IV, Sewer Charges and City Rates, Residential and Small Commercial, the minimum charge is $62.30 a quarter. The commodity charge is $9.34 per 1,000 gallons. Commercial, the customer charge is $1,176.88 per quarter. The commodity charge is $5.43 per 1,000 gallons. The large commercial industrial, customer charge, $1,815.39 per quarter. The commodity charge is $4.35 per 1,000 gallons. Schedule V, Sewer Charges, Outside City Rates, Residential and Small Commercial, the minimum charge is $124.62 per quarter. The commodity charge is $18.69 per 1,000 gallons. Commercial, the customer charge is $2,353.74 per quarter. The commodity charge is $10.84 per 1,000 gallons. Large Commercial/Industrial, the customer charge is $3,630.79 per quarter. The commodity charge is $8.72 per 1,000 gallons. Schedule VI, Sewer Charges for Warwick and the Urban Service District Rates, Residential and Small Commercial, the minimum charge is $93.40 per quarter. The commodity charge is $14.20 per 1,000 gallons. Commercial, the customer charge is $1,765.31 a quarter. The commodity charge is $8.12 per 1,000 gallon. For Large Commercial/Industrial, the customer charge is $2,723.08 per quarter. The commodity charge is $6.55 per 1,000 gallons. Schedule VII, Sewer Charges, Sewer Customers Only, and looking at the number of fixtures, 1 to 2 fixtures, quarterly and city rate is $79.68. The quarterly outside city rate is $159.37, and the quarterly urban service district rate is $119.53. For 3 to 5 fixtures, the quarterly and city rate is $119.53. The quarterly outside city rate is $239.07, and the quarterly urban service district rate is $179.29. For 6 to 20 fixtures, the quarterly and city rate is $171.80. The quarterly outside city rate is $343.59, and the quarterly urban service district rate is $257.69. For every fixture over 20, the quarterly and city rate is $70.85. The quarterly outside city rate is $141.68, and the quarterly urban service district rate is $106.29. It looks like all other provisions remain the same.
Questions or comments from the council?
I'm still sorry, boy.
Wait, no, we're not done yet.
Catch your breath.
Okay, hearing no questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2722 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2722 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I don't know why I'm losing my voice, you're the one who's doing all the talking. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2723 for the first reading.
So move.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Ordinance number 2723, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to set fees for fiscal year 2023 and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the various fees charged by the city of Salisbury are reviewed and then revised as part of the procedures associated with the adoption of the fiscal year 2023 budget of the city of Salisbury. And whereas the fee amount set forth in FY 2023 Fee Schedule attached here too and incorporated herein as Exhibit 1, identify and list all fees amounts proposed to be charged or otherwise assessed by the city of Salisbury for the period of fiscal year 2023. And whereas some fee amounts to be charged or otherwise assessed by the city in prior fiscal years may have been inadvertently omitted from the fiscal year 2023 Fee Schedule attached here too as Exhibit 1, and any fee amount not listed in said fiscal year 2023 Fee Schedule shall be and remain the fee set forth in the last, as set forth in the city of Salisbury municipal code. Now therefore, be it inordained and enacted by the council of the city of Salisbury as follows. Section 1, the fee amounts set forth in the fiscal year 2023 Fee Schedule attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated as if fully set forth in this Section 1 are hereby adopted by the council of the city of Salisbury. And furthermore, the fee amount set forth in the FY 23 Fee Schedule shall supersede the corresponding fee amount set forth in the city of Salisbury municipal code until one or more of such fee amounts are subsequently amended. So moving forward and looking at the fee schedule, I believe the best way to go about it is for me just to highlight the changes. The billboard license is changing to 1.65 per year per square foot. That's on page three. Page six, the building plan reviewed fees have changed. Council President, would you like me to read each of the new fees or just to highlight where the changes have been made?
No, I'd like to, I think we need to do the new fees.
Okay. So for the building plan review fees per code 15.04.030, fees based on cost of construction from 101,000 to 500,000, the fee is 250. From 500,000 up to 1 million, it's 300, and from 1,001,000 and up is 375. The building permit fees per code 15.04.030, fees based on cost of construction, again, the 101,000 up to 500,000 is 1,300. From 500,000 all the way up to 1 million is 4,900, and from 1,001,000 and up is 8,500. Page seven, looking at other building fees, grading 200. Occupancy Inspection, 75. Within the Planning Commission, the Comprehensive Development Plan Review, non-residential, is 250. The Comprehensive Development Plan Review, residential, is 250. Certificate of Design/Site Plan Review, 250. The Paleo Channel Wellhead Protection Site Plan Review is 100. Rezoning, 200. Text Amendment, 200. On page eight, under the Critical Area Program, Certificate of Compliance per Code 12.20.110, subdivision 200. Site Plan Certificate of Design Comprehensive Development Plan is 100. The re-subdivision is 100, and the sketch plan and buffer management plan have been Moving forward to page nine, subdivision recording fee per county court. The recording fee for subdivision plans has been stricken. The recording fee per county court for recording fee for re-subdivision plans have also been EMS services, the BLS base rate for resident is 950, non-resident 1,050. The ELS-1 emergency rate is 1,100 for residents and for non-residents is 1,200. The ALS-2 emergency rate is 1,300 for residents and 1,400 for non-residents. And the ALS on-scene care is 550 for residents, 650 for non-residents. Page 13, parking permits per code 10.04.10. The rates are going to be changing as follows. Lot 1, lower lot by library, $50. The nonprofit rate for that same period, 40. Behind city center, 50. Nonprofit for that same space is 40. Market Street and Route 13, 45. Nonprofit rate, $36.25. Lot 7 and 13, 20 versus 17, 50 for nonprofits. Lot 9, $50 versus 40 for nonprofits. The near the state building, State's Attorney's Office, $50 versus 40 for nonprofits. Behind the library, $45 versus $36.25 for nonprofits. Beside Market Street End, 45 versus $39.25 for nonprofits. Across from Feldman's, $50 versus 40 cents for nonprofits. By Avery Hall, $50 versus 40 cents for nonprofits. Daily Times, $50 versus 40 cents for nonprofits. By the Drawbridge, which is lot 30, $25 versus $21.25 for nonprofits. East of Brew River, 25 versus 21.25 for nonprofits. West of Brew River, $25 versus 21.25 cents for nonprofits. The lot SPS St. Peter's Street is $50 versus $40 for nonprofit. East Church Street, $50 versus $40 for nonprofit. West Church Street, 50 versus 40 for nonprofits. And parking garage is $60 versus 50 for nonprofits. Those are all the changes that I was able to identify.
Just one comment, I know you do this to catch me, see if you can catch me. A couple of times on the lot rates, you actually said 50 and then you said 40 cents, I think.
If I did?
Yeah, everything should be dollars.
Yes. Forty, I was, yes, I think what I did, sir, is $50 versus 40 for nonprofits. So every, the rate is $50 for all of those and the nonprofit rate for that same lot was $40.
Correct, okay.
I just have a couple of questions. So.
I just didn't hear trash service on page five.
Did I overlook that one?
I think so.
All right, let's go back to page five. That was a good catch, I didn't catch that.
You're right, I did not overlook that. Waste disposal fees by field operations, trash service, 67.
Good catch. That's why we have a city clerk. You have a question?
Yes. Have we informed the county and some of the nonprofits, who many of them are going through their budgets right now, about the potential increases?
I don't know if finance has, but typically we do, pretty early in the process to try to make sure that county knows, just because they're on the same schedule we are. But we'll do the same, we'll double check in the morning.
I know in our, in our budget session, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, we didn't discuss the fee schedule. So I will probably at some point during the process begin, suggest, making suggestions on some things. I don't know if tonight's the appropriate night, but I know we had a discussion with the tow people. I do believe those rates need to be adjusted because they haven't been adjusted for years and I know everybody's expenses have gone up, so I think we need to accommodate for that.
If I could suggest?
Sure.
You know, what would be helpful is writing them out, emailing them to Julia and Andy and I and Keith, and they can start plugging all that stuff in quickly, I mean, whenever you're ready, but, or however you want to handle that, Mr. President, but I mean, I think.
If we can do it this week, that would be great, and then what we, I think we need to do is if we could, at the work session, just go over what any adjustments are so that we know ahead of time before we go to the next reading. Is that okay for everybody?
Yeah.
And if I can, Mr. Vice President, all I was suggesting is that if we get it all in writing, it will just be faster.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I figured that would be easier if we did it that way, because there are several things that I want to make some suggestions on. Also to note that in the fee schedule, there is not a vacant lot. It just says vacant building.
Building.
There's no vacant lot line, so I don't know if that needs, if you plan on adding that or not.
This isn't incorporated, because this was put together before this legislation was heard.
Because that ordinance hasn't been passed.
So those are forthcoming.
We'll fix the draft.
Okay.
Right.
All right. The last thing I have is, and this ties into some other things, as of coming up on June 30, 2022, our fire service agreement terminates according to the contract.
Ally Roberts?
My suggestion, there needs to be some significant differences in the next agreement, if there is one, but I will read this last part that says, "If the reimbursement formula set forth in paragraph C becomes financially untenable for either party due to material unforeseen changes in insurance coverage or payments, then either party shall have the right to terminate the agreement by giving at least six months' advance written notice to the other party." I will say that we are in a position as a city that the agreement has become financially untenable.
But not for that reason, and it's subject to the second part of that sentence, which is for unforeseen insurance reasons. You're 100% right about it not being either fully fair or financially tenable.
So that needs to be changed too, in that wording, because, but yeah, I think we're at a part that we're at a breaking point.
I agree.
And we cannot continue to afford providing services when they're not being fully paid for the value of those services.
I think we have unanimous consensus with that.
I'm just, I'm trying to send a message.
But if I may.
To people who are running for county council.
If I may.
This is a critical issue for the city of Salisbury.
Mr. Mayor.
It is, and you're 100% right. I think we're going to have to figure out whether or not it is possible to renegotiate the terms of an agreement in an election season, you know, immediately prior to, what it may require is, the one thing I'd suggest, what it may require is what we have done in the past is a slight extension. Now, not an extension the likes of which we've entertained in the past, but what it may require is simply getting passed an election to the new county council and county executive.
So, but to those who are still sitting in those seats, we are paying you to do a job until that job is done. I don't care about an election. I don't, I don't care about an election. So that's their job.
Yeah.
Okay, point made. Now, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. Excuse me. All those in favor of ordinance number 2723 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2723 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Boucher. Yeoman's job on that.
Thank you.
I would also like to announce that there will be a public hearing for these budget ordinances and constant yield would be held on May 9. So everybody write it down so that you know, and on all of the budget ordinances, we will have a public hearing on May 9. That concludes, believe it or not, the agenda, and I have three requests for public comments because of the length of the meeting and our standard procedure is to allow four minutes per person, and if more than one person is talking on the same thing and you agree with everything that was said or your comments are the same, please, if you would, just say, "I agree with everything the previous person said." First up is David Haynes.
I'm going to withdraw this time.
Okay, Mr. Haynes withdraws. Next up is Lynn Bratton. Didn't see you back there, Lynn.
I'm here. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Lynn Bratton. I live at 303 South Boulevard in the city of Salisbury. I'm here tonight, I'd like to speak on two different ordinances that were discussed earlier in this meeting. I will be as brief as I normally am. President Heath? I will be as brief as I normally am. President Heath.
You're on the, you're on the clock.
The vacant lot issue, again, I would like to say, why? 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 Those lots are already identified in the Department of Assessments and Taxation tax records as unimproved property. That is a database that could be gleaned, be searched, and be identified. They are already, as our mayor indicated, under the, the guidelines of any ordinance. So if they become a trash dump, or they become unsightly, or they become unwieldy with grass, or abandoned cars, those ordinances can be invoked and those properties can be addressed and taken care of. Whether you have a price on the ordinance, whether you have a registration fee on it this year or not, I see no reason for one more layer of some sort of bureaucracy to identify something that's already identified. That's my say on that. The next one is the tree. Nobody has issued any, no, there was no conversation with all of the stakeholders involved in this process. There is no fee to apply for one of these. However, the tree companies that we hire, engage to do the property maintenance and management, they are being asked to then file all the paperwork, which will add an extra cost to the taking down of a tree that probably needs to come down or is where it shouldn't be. Couple of the questions I have, you have to replace the tree. Is that in kind? So if I have a mulberry bush that is dropping the winery in my backyard, am I going to have to put back another mulberry bush or a wild cherry tree? Who's to say what kind of tree it needs to be? Where are the rules on that one? What age of the tree? How tall does that replacement tree need to be? Can I just go get a little sapling from a greenhouse someplace? Where's the, the follow-up on that? Trees have to be watered, they have to be maintained. I cut a tree down on a house on Church Street. There's no outside spigots to that, so that involves taking buckets of water over all summer to try and keep that tree alive. I just have a lot of questions to it that are more housekeeping issues, not conceptually. I am a hippie from the 70s. I have my first shirt from the Arbor Day, the, the Earth Day, still in a drawer. So I mean, I started a recycling center when I student taught in the 70s at an, at a high school. So I'm all for environmental issues. I've got a farm. I know all about maintenance of property and stewardship for our environment. But I don't understand telling me that if I cut down a tree that a bird planted 30 years ago on the back of my yard and it's now too close to my house and it's causing my foundations to shift, that I then have to replace that tree with another one somewhere else that's going to be just as big in another few years. Or a magnolia tree that, again, the bird decided to plant because they were sitting on a fence. I, I just have issues with lots of the logistics of it. Not the concept of tree canopy and being good stewards, but who determines what kind of tree it is? How big's it gotta be? Who's going to inspect to see if it keeps living for the next five years? There's lots of issues with that that just seem to be very cumbersome and not what our city needs to be addressing right now. So thank you for tabling it. I hope you can work through some of those issues. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Lynn.
Hi, you.
You have 10 seconds.
I love Lynn.
I know what four-minute recess is like.
You would, you'd do that. Oh, Lynn, take my day. Next, we have Bobby Robinson.
He stepped out.
He left. Okay. That takes care of the.
He has his hand up.
If there was a sign-up sheet, I didn't see it.
No, no problem. Come on up to the, just state your name and we all know, we know you, but for the record.
Thank you. Richard Insley. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, mayor, council, clerk, administrator, solicitor. I'm a believer in private property rights. And, and my feeling is that they should only be infringed upon when there's a compelling need. And I don't see the compelling need here. There are a lot of reasons why a property owner might want or need to take down a tree. It could be it's damaging a roof. It could be tree roots are invading the sewer. Could be a lot of things. First question I would ask you is, has anybody paid to have a tree removed recently? Have any idea what it costs?
Yes.
That one trimmed and it's like $900.
Can run into, it can run into thousands of dollars, actually. I got a quote on a tree, admittedly a big oak tree, that was $3,000 to remove. So it seems to me that if I owned the lot, I paid the mortgage, I made the payments on it, I own the gold, if there's gold on it, or the oil, if there's oil there, or whatever else goes along with it, including the tree. And I, I don't see the compelling need to have to ask somebody if I can take the tree down or not. And the fee to contribute to a tree fund, in addition, seems to me over and above the cost of removing the tree, adding insult to injury. So I, I think it is overreach and I don't see the compelling need for it. On the subject of vacant lot registration, there was a little bit of a question in your discussion as to whether it required the registration of vacant lots and the payment of a fee. And lines 27 and 28 clearly state this, and I entered the mid-sentence, but the city will be furthered by amending section 1522 of the Salisbury City Code to require the registration of vacant lots and the payment of annual fees. So that is in the ordinance as presented. And again, I'd ask, what, what is the compelling need to register vacant lots and pay a fee? You're already paying property taxes on the lot. If there's something going on, on the lot that is undesirable, whether it's undesirable people or trash or whatever, you've already got ordinances on the books to handle those issues. And if it's trash, you know, you're going to let me know about it and I'm going to remove the trash. If it is drug dealing and, and drunken disorderly, whatever, I don't handle those problems. I'm going to call you. I'm going to call the police department. And, and I think that's who you would call as well. So when you consider, for example, Northwood Industrial Park, there is a lot of vacant land there, a lot of, lot of lots. They're subdivided into lots. And to have to register each and every one of those individually and pay fees on them, and I'd say, for what? If you need to identify them, they're already well-identified on the tax rolls in Department Assessments and Taxation. So, and someone said, you know, the right to, to govern or to regulate these things is clearly established. Well, I grant, I grant you that it is, but I just leave you with a quote from an esteemed friend and colleague and attorney and former city solicitor who told us one time, bad laws are not necessarily illegal. So I, I would ask you to reconsider both of these ordinances. I, I don't think they're necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Insley. We're up to administration comments?
Sure, Mr. President. I'll keep it fairly brief since we've been here a long time. One of our longest meetings in years and still only two hours. I was last week with the eight mayors of the Just City Mayor Fellowship for Racial Justice. And Mayor Satya Rhodes Conway of Madison, Wisconsin flew in after a meeting that began at 6:00 PM the night before and ran till 4:00 AM. So let's count our blessings, why don't we? I'm going to start with just a quick clarification. The identification and registration of vacant lots is not up for discussion. That is already law. We do it right now. It's been the law for over 30 years. That's been on the books. That is not a proposal. That is on the table. The only proposal that's on the table is a restructuring of an increase of, to a meaningful level, the fees associated with the registration of those properties. Let's talk about compelling needs for a second. The city and our residents, and in particular, your, my neighbors, are the victim of the externalities of those who abuse their neighbors and neighborhoods with the effects of vacancy. Vacant lots are shown to, and vacant properties are shown to increase crime in neighborhoods. They are shown to increase the risk of fires. They are shown to increase the, or excuse me, decrease property values. And I want to be clear that somebody pays for all that. Somebody pays for all that. Right now, that burden has shifted onto you and I and our neighbors. That is not handled by the people who own those properties. Those externalities are increased when they're vacant and they're pushed to all of us. So the last thing I'd say is ethics only go as far as your policies. You can't say you hold a value if you don't live by it. And that's why I think it's important for us to consider policies that actually enforce our values. Whether or not we adopt any of these policies is minor in the scheme of things, but I think it's important that we live by the things that we believe. Now, two things I learned tonight. One, my, my friend for 25 years almost, Lynn Bratton, was a hippie. Is she still here? Yep. I didn't know that. So Lynn was a hippie. Second, we're still referring to a parking lot by its proximity to Feldman's, which I did not know. But that's, you know, it's great to learn something. So I just want to say thank you for the robust consideration discussion. And that's, that's all I got tonight.
Thank you. Council comments, Mr. Bode.
I'm good.
Excuse me. I would like to make a comment.
Yeah. Sure, go ahead.
I have my time.
You yield your time.
I give my time to him.
My name is John Ohrf. I'm the owner of the Old Franklin Hotel, otherwise known as the Chesapeake's Building at the corner of West Main Street and Lake Street. Somewhere along the line, we have missed the last six years of discussions about what's going on with lot 30, and I guess that's on us. But I would respectfully request, and in the future, some function of notifying adjoining landowners as to what's going on next door to them might be helpful. I know that I haven't been to a city council meeting since probably, heck, since we bought our building from the city in 1998. And I'll make it short. I have a letter that we, that my wife Dana and I wrote, and I will summarize it. We are concerned are primarily two or three things. And, and I expect that we will get some opportunity to make our opinions known during the planning and zoning and permitting process, as well as the review from the historic district of which this development is part, I assume, since we are as well. And have made many efforts over the years to comply with all of the requirements of being in the historic district. Our concerns primarily are, like everyone's concerns in the city, traffic, the lack of parking, and for us during the process of building this thing, which is, I believe, going to be five stories, two buildings, five stories tall, the bad effect on our businesses in that, in our building, which we have maintained at great labor and expense for 25 years. That, those are our concerns. I sent a lengthy letter describing in more detail our concerns about it to all, to the council this morning. I'm sorry that it was so late. I mean, I just saw the thing on the news last week that, and it seems like it has been, the, the terms and the scope of the disposition agreement seems to be approved and moving forward, and that's fine. I hope, any of you who have had a chance to read our letter, I appreciate you taking the time to do it. Those of you who have, who have not read our letter, it should be in the council email. I sent one to Julia. I know that Dana this afternoon sent one to the mayor. We would just respectfully ask that as the process moves forward, you take our opinions into account. And that's it. If there is some process by which we can be more fully informed as to what is going on next door to us, that would be great. If, if I need to check the city website every week, I guess that, that, we've been kind of busy the last few years, so we, I, you know, I take responsibility for missing it. I, I, we have lived in that building ever since we bought it until about a year ago. We have also maintained a, a small house in Somerset County. And every time somebody in Somerset, this is just Somerset County, that's just with the way it is, you know, if somebody wants to do something on the, next door to you, you get a letter from the county saying, hey, there's going to be a hearing. So if you all sent us a letter and I missed it, the mail is a problem. I apologize. So at some point, I will talk to Donna about what we need to do to find out what is going on next door to the property we've invested our, virtually our entire working lives in. Thank you.
If I may, John, Mr. Ohrf, if I may, real quick, why don't you and I, if you'll stick around for a minute, why don't we just set up a meeting and we'll sit down and, I don't see Rick Baldwin here anymore. He left.
Oh, and actually, the first sentence that I did not read was that we, you know, in general, we, we're all for something happening in that neighborhood. Lord knows, nothing's happened there since Brew River got built and we redid our place, except for the dog park, which is in the letter too. I'll spare you all the dog park.
Why don't we sit down? So if you'll stick around for a few minutes after, we'll compare calendars and we'll set up a time to meet.
Happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where do we leave off?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I have like 20 seconds?
You can have four minutes.
I don't, well, how many?
Because Mr. Bode usually goes eight.
Good evening, President Heath, Mr. Mayor, people of the council, Salisbury City Fire Department. Been in the fire department 34 years, not with the city of Salisbury, unfortunately. But I just want you to consider the funding that came down from the state for the COVID money. All right, we were on the front lines every single day during the pandemic. Every single day, we went home to our families. And we didn't know whether we were going to give them COVID. They were going to die from it. We didn't know what was going to happen. And from what I'm listening to on the budget proposals that went in, there's some funding issues for the fire department to get our pay up to where it needs to be because it's been put on the back burner for years and years and years. We have people in the department that have been there 40 years that have a big gap that needs to be filled. I just asked the council to look at it, look at the funds, look at the funds that were handed down from the state. I know there's some projects to use those funds. I know there's, those funds have been used for some projects already. Just, you know, give us, give us the benefit to look at it, a hard look at it. Because like I said, we were on the front lines. We had to wear a mask every day. Most of the city employees got to go home and work from home. We didn't have that option. If you called 911, we, we had to go. We didn't get the option of saying, they have COVID. You know, some houses we went in, one person called, but the whole house had COVID that we were walking into. All right. So just, I asked the council to pay attention to that. And, and I know COVID is, is really well, really, really good now, but we are still going to COVID calls. We're still wearing masks. We're still gounding up on calls. You know, all of that for us has, has not let up a lot. You know, we have vaccinations now, which means that we can go home feeling a little better that we're not going to take it home to our kids, our babies, our newborns, you know, going to our kids' soccer games, whatever. So I asked the council to just keep that in mind. And thank you.
Ms. Blake, I think we left off with you. Did you go?
No.
Oh, let's, let's do April.
Let's do April. I yield to April. Jackson, go ahead.
We got so much yielding going on.
Just Saturday, I got a call about a house fire on Hanson Street. Just Saturday, I got a call about a house fire on Hanson Street. It really concerned me. I called the mother today, and I would like for you to keep Cory Turner in your prayers. He was burnt severely. He's in John Hopkins Burn Center. He won't be able to go back to school. He'll be at John Hopkins for at least six months, and he'll have surgeries almost every day. The parents lost everything, and he's a 16-year-old young man who is a student at Bennett High, and his mother says he's doing extremely well. He's not complaining about being in any pain or anything. Firefighters, I applaud you, because it could have been his life. And I realize that you do step out in danger. Every time you step out of that fire station, you walk into danger. So I'm going to commend you, and we're going to work very hard on this budget to hopefully get you what you really need to satisfy you and get you where you need to be. I'm saying that myself, because I'm going to work on it, you know? And we're going to set up a fund for this young man's family, because like I said, they lost everything. And this young man's life is still here because of you all. So, you know, you can look at it any kind of way you want to, but our lives are indebted to you all, because you go far and beyond, and I thank you.
Thank you, April. Angela?
Well, I just want to say, you know, just yielding off of Mayor Day's comments about, you know, having good policy and ethical policy, I think we need to, as a council, as we go into this budget, look at our ethical responsibilities to our people. And there's, we just, we're going to relook at it. I know the council's very concerned. Everyone, a part of the process is concerned, and we are hoping that we meet some needs and some gap and some things that need to, to step up. Having said that, if you're healthy enough, by all means, please donate blood.
Thank you. Michelle?
I'm just going to keep this quick. I just want to reiterate what April just said. You know, my family utilizes emergency services more than the average family, and you guys have always been top-notch, and I really appreciate everything you do. And I'm, like April said, we're going to work really hard to do what we need to do to get, get you guys what you need.
Thank you, Michelle. We've been here a long time, so I'll keep it very brief. First, let's all please keep the Ukraine in our prayers. They had another bad day today, and it's not getting any better. So whatever we can do from a prayer point of view, let's do. Second of all, you guys have known that I was a firefighter, I still am a firefighter, once a firefighter, always a firefighter, and I know how tough it is, and I always have a commitment to do what's right and moral. I told the mayor the other day that as long as I've been on this council, this is the most difficult budget that I've ever worked on, and it's not easy to balance everything. And every group that comes before you has needs, and we try to do the best. Do we screw up sometimes? Yeah, we probably do. But believe me, nothing is intentional, and we will do what we believe in our hearts is the best thing for everybody. We always have, and we always will. So with that, thank you all for coming, thank you for those who made comments, and the meeting is adjourned.